It's Hi Mayor.
Okay, the February 10th, 2015 study session in Newport Beach City Council will come to order. We have the roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Muldoon, any items for clarification? Of an annual report? Please come forward.
Yes, thank you. My name is Dave Rader. I'm a pastor up in Brea, but I'm also a member of the Orange County Human Relations Commission. And so I'm here today to, first of all, thank you for your participation with our commission and to share a little bit of what's been happening lately with the commission and how it relates to Newport Beach. And I have to say, first of all, I'm a commissioner in Brea also, and I'm sitting here coveting your council chambers. If you could maybe move those up to Brea, we would really appreciate. And you're too far from the audience for them to throw things. In Brea, it's much easier, so good for you.
You'd be surprised.
Well, the Orange County Human Relations Commission's believe that all people have a right to live free from discrimination and violence, so that we can provide programs to create a safe and respectful community, and that's what our mission is. We've mediated this last year, 150 cases, as well as 21 family mediations that pertain to residents of Newport Beach. We documented three hate crimes and facilitated one police community reconciliation case in Newport Beach a year ago. 1,939 Newport youth participated in our Bridges Violence Prevention Program, learning to create safe and inclusive school climates. Four Newport youth participated in the summer leadership camp or year-long human relations internship. Fifty-two Newport Beach students participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoes Symposium, fullerton, learning about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in their schools and community. And we sought to build a sense of community with Newport Beach residents and staff through hate crime victim support. I lost a page, excuse me. Proactively, we built understanding and positive relations among diverse residents. We have brought police and diverse residents together to build safe, respectful neighborhoods, address tragic conflicts, and overcome the divisiveness that erodes our sense of community, and sustain the infrastructure to assist in crisis situations when they occur. So just as important as the infrastructure of storm drains and curbs and gutters are the protection of Newport Beach residents. And so the human relations infrastructure of effective intergroup relations and programs is used to train professional staff and positive relationships with diverse elements of our communities. And that's why we exist as a Human Relations Commission. If the mayor would come forward, and we'd like to make a presentation at this time, we'd like to honor the city for your support of good human relations in 2013 and 14 with the presentation of this certificate of recognition. I've only been on the commission for a couple of years, but I really am impressed with the work that they do, and so we thank you for being part of that.
You know, by coincidence today, I happened to be down at near Riverside and Coast Highway, and I was really touched by something that I saw. The, one of our police officers had encountered a woman who apparently was homeless, a lot of stuff piled up on the street. And I just happened to be walking behind him and just listening to how kind and considerate and courteous he was to this woman. And I didn't hear everything that went on, but you could certainly tell by the tone of the voice and the way he was treating her that, you know, that he was really treating her with a lot of consideration and a lot of humanity in how, and how he treated her. And I just, it was very impressive to, to actually see that happen with one of our police officers, because you hear so much about homeless people and problems and so forth. So it's a very touching moment, and thank you for the presentation today. Okay, next item on our agenda is the review of the 15th Street Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Kiff or Mr. Webb?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. If I could jump right in, I know this is a long item, so we're going to kind of breeze through a lot of slides, and we'll stop wherever you like on that. I know you've got a lot in your agenda, but this is an exciting project for us. We've been working on this several years. This is the rehabilitation of 15th Street on the peninsula, and it also takes into account one of the goals of re-beautifying the peninsula, so we're also looking at landscaping from 21st Street down to 12th Street. With us today, we have our lead consultants with Somas, Matthew Hillman, and also Dan Herman, who's at the podium today. He's with Raven Herman, our lead architect on this. So I'm going to turn over to Dan, go through it real quick. Just to let you know, the genesis of this project came out of many things. We have pavement needs on 15th Street. If you've been out there, pavement's in bad shape. Our pavement management plan says we need to replace it. Our signal on the corner is very old. We know we have to replace it. We've been holding off for this project to incorporate it. We also have parking needs out there, ADA, some water quality issues we want to address. And this was also priority of the Citizens Advisory Panel for Balboa, that they wanted to beautify the peninsula. So we, all these things kind of got rolled into this project. It's a large project, and we'll go through the details real quick. So I'll turn over to Dan Herman, and we're off.
All right. There's a lengthy document that's been produced, and I'm not going to go through it page by page. Staff will put it on the website, so all of the public can see it in detail. And as Dave said, I'm going to try to go through it at a high level, and anytime that you'd like me to stop and explain more details, let me know. We looked at two projects, 15th Street in Balboa. The existing condition of 15th Street is primarily commercial with the American Legion, some residences. It's one of the unique streets on the peninsula in that you can see both the bay and the ocean from the street, and it gives it a unique urban design quality. When we started the project, the city and public developed a series of goals. They've said, replace the aging infrastructure, increase parking if possible, improve circulation, both for vehiculars and pedestrians, improve the aesthetics, and relate the improvements to the investment the city is making in Marina Park and leverage that to improve the area. Some of the images, I think you're all fairly familiar with it. The area is quite interesting from the urban design point of view, but a little tired from the public infrastructure point of view. You see the pavement is in poor condition. The trees are, reached their age. One of the major issues we heard at the public forums were safety concerns with cars coming in and out of the alley at high speeds and conflicts with a huge volume of pedestrian traffic we have. There were two public meetings, one at the American Legion Yacht Club and one at Newport Elementary School. This diagram shows the second meeting, and we had everyone put up Post-It notes so that we could respond or address their concerns. And this was the final plan. In broad terms, we did a number of things. We reduced the width of the lanes and reorganized the alignment of the lanes at the intersections, so that 15th Street could have a continuous right turn in both directions, and then we could have a through or left turn lane. And that was all done in conjunction with the new signals. As part of that improvement, we also widened the sidewalks at the corner of Balboa and 15th Street, and suggested a decorative treatment at the corner, on the sidewalk treatment, and a decorative treatment on the crosswalk. And then we've added a series of trees, both palm tree and canopy tree, along the sidewalks. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then as a safety improvement, we looked at a textured pavement in the alley to be a marker, both visually and a texture, to help reduce that conflict between cars and people walking on the sidewalks. Right now, there are 70 existing safe parking spaces, and we were able to add four additional for a total of 74 spaces. And I'll go through how those are aligned as well. If we look at the ocean side of the street, so ocean would be on the left, and Balboa is on the right of that slide, we've kept the 90-degree parking in the first segment as it now exists, but we widened the sidewalk slightly. And then, as we, as I mentioned earlier, we've realigned the lanes. And then on the ocean side, we've actually put parking in the middle at an angle. And what that does is facilitate a U-turn movement and makes things safer. And we're hoping that it allows for beach drop-off and that it allows for school drop-off in that area and using that turning movement. We've located some bike racks in the area, added trashcans, and then put some decorative paving in the sidewalk as well as the crosswalk.
And Dan, I can interject here. That is a key feature. On the ocean side, you'll notice the turnaround. This area, if you've ever seen in the summer, is kind of mayhem. People are just backing up three-point turns. We tried to bring some order to it, so they could get through easier and keep the parking. And you have a drop-off now that's pretty convenient. The other thing is, we have a lot of issues down at Newport Elementary with the school, and they drop off on Balboa Boulevard. We thought this would be a great place in the winter where the street's not used as much, that the moms could drop off the children here or pick up, provide a better place, because it's just one block walking down the beachboard walk to the school.
And we have just a series of simulations, and I'm not going to go through those in detail, but just flip through them so you could see. This is an enlargement of the actual intersection, so you can see the crosswalk treatment, and we've studied many options, and we'll show you some of those. And you might have some points of view if you like something better. Also, the widening of the sidewalk at the corners, and then the introduction of a, kind of a fun element, beach balls as bollards.
Do you have a question on the web?
Ma'am, there'll be time to comment later. So some of the alternative treatments that could be used for the crosswalks, imagery of what that improvement would look like. As we go to the lower bay side, the parking alignment is pretty much as it exists today. We've just narrowed the lanes and increased the sidewalks in width, and then added the same planting scheme as on the other side, and the same textured pavement in the alleys. At the very end, 4th Bay, we are adding some entry monuments to identify it as a residential street distinct from 15th, again, using the textured paving and some treatment at the terminus of the 15th Street dock to mark that. We worked very extensively with the landscape department to identify trees that they felt comfortable maintaining and would grow on the peninsula. And so the basic trees are the date palm, the queen palm, and the golden medallion tree, but there are certainly some options for each of those. We know that we have to make sure we choose a tree that you can walk under, that you can see the storefronts, and that if you live in or have a view from the second story, the tree doesn't grow high enough. So we're cognizant of that and working very hard to make sure we pick a tree that meets all of those criteria. Shows some of the elements. You can see the West Bay Avenue Monument and the 15th Street Dock Monument. And then, as I mentioned, we were proposing the beach ball bollards, but there's certainly a whole range of different things that you could do that are in that same category of beachy ocean or more traditional urban site furniture. We also looked at West Balboa from 21st Street to 12th Street, and the improvements for those areas are driven specifically by the width of the existing sidewalk in the median. And in many places, the sidewalks were too narrow to add a tree and still maintain the ADA access. So only in those areas between 21st and 20th were we able to add trees in the actual sidewalk. Everywhere else, we were looking at adding them just in the medians. So that's our existing condition. You can see the area, from an urban design point of view, is a transition area. You have the business district, and we have some commercial properties along 21st, and then we transition very quickly into all residential properties. For the most part, the sidewalks are very narrow. One of the great qualities of the median is the existing palm trees and natal plums and the islands on the corner. And unfortunately, the Coastal Commission won't let us plant any more of those palms. And so that, while that would have been a natural to fill in and add to in the median, it's not allowed by regulation of the Coastal Commission. This is our proposal for 21st to 18th. So you can see between 20th and 21st, we're able to add some trees in the sidewalk, also 19th and 20th. And then on the other side of the street where it's very narrow, we're suggesting some green screen treatment to block the views of the existing parking. And then, as an, as an entry element, we're starting the streetscape with palms and then switching to a canopy tree. This shows you the section of those two streets, the width of the sidewalk in the median, and how we're trying to best use that to bring some enhancement. Further north on Balboa, you've completed an improvement where you've used some tree grates and, and other planting. Our condition is a little different in that we have on-street parking, so we really couldn't put the planting along the curb, because people couldn't get it out of their car. But we can use this treatment with the tree grate to successfully maintain ADA access and still get trees. Also, trying to maintain, one of the nice things about the median planting, and that's the bulbs at the intersections, and protecting those trees that the Coastal Commission won't let us replant. We're also trying to improve the existing quality of that median planting. There are some trees in sections now, but they're not irrigated, and we don't believe that the soil is of very high quality, and so the growth is much smaller than we would expect, even though it's a very harsh condition in the middle of the street. The trees still should be doing a little better than they are. Again, some imagery existing and proposed with the improvements that you've seen. The next section is at a cross from Marina Park. And for those of you involved in Marina Park, there was quite a bit of discussion with the public living across from it, that they didn't want their view blocked. And so in this section, instead of canopy trees, we were suggesting the use of some palm trees, not planted as densely as we might wish, in order to maintain the open views, and integrate the park landscape into that median landscape. We are challenged here in that there's an existing sewer line located just off of the median, and we're working with the district to make sure that we can plant the trees and protect the sewer line. And we have a real important intersection of 15th Street, which we showed you earlier, and Balboa. And it's actually one of the areas that is improved to a greater level than other sections of Balboa. We have some wider median sections, the variety of trees. The paving in the median is in good condition in the natal plum. So this section actually looks quite nice, and we're just trying to enhance it, integrate it into the design of 15th Street. In some locations on Balboa, we're widening the sidewalk, and we've worked with the traffic and emergency services to make sure that in no case, when we widen the sidewalk, that we're hindering their access or movements on any of the side streets or Balboa. And then our last section is 14th to 12th. And this section is a little unique, because we have the church, we have the school, we have several multifamily properties, so the texture of the development changes. The school has planting in their front yard, so that gives us some relief. But we still have a fairly narrow median and narrow sidewalks, so that, that is restricting the scope of the improvements we can do. So we're looking at planting that median, asking the school if they might enhance their front yard landscaping. One of the opportunities we have is to use perspective. So as you drive down the street, you can see these trees look like they're a continuous line growing very closely together, but they would be 30, 35 feet apart. And so if you're living on the street and looking across them, the impact isn't quite the same. And that's particularly important at Marina Park, as I said earlier. Existing, and then the proposed.
And it's noted that there's residences on both sides, so you're really not blocking view. The only place there's a view corridor is Marina Park, and we've kept the trees down to minimum there.
The current schedule for the project is pending direction from you and approval of the project. The design could be completed by this summer. The project could then be bid and awarded in the fall, and construction would occur in the winter of this year. Current estimate of construction cost for 15th Street, and that includes all of the new paving, the signals, sidewalks, and planting, is about $2.5 million. And for Balboa, from 21st to 12th, just under $1.5 million. So about $4 million total construction. So I'm sorry, I was very quick, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you would have.
And we recognize this as a transitional project. This project was started under former councilmember Hen, and we did have two extensive public meetings, 50-plus in each. We met down at the Legion in one of them. We actually met in the auditorium of the Newport Elementary School in one of them. Had a lot of participation. We had two plans. We refined it down to one, to what you see today. It hasn't been vetted at council yet, and there are still some probably public comments that have to be. And this is more of the generous plan. It is a $4 million project, it's a very long length. Right now, this is one of the projects I mentioned, we would talk about at the goal setting. And it is currently to be funded in this coming up year's capital budget, so we're looking for obviously your input in the public at this point.
Yeah, Councilmember Petros?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a series of questions, starting on the 15th Street illustrations. Pardon me. Today, as you are at the, what'd it be, the beach side, and there is a, the ramp for the boardwalk goes down and meets the edge of the pavement in the street, and there's some handrails there. Is there any reason why the hand, what's the purpose of those handrails, and would they be maintained as part of this design?
We haven't gotten down to the actual design of that yet. There's a grade differential, if you know. It's, some of those are pretty 18 inches high, so the handrails are probably more for the curb drop-off. But I think there's an opportunity, because we're redoing the street, to flatten out that grade, particularly on the house side. I was looking at this morning. There's a new house going in on one side. There's the surf, stuff surfer on the other. I think we can flatten that out, maybe get rid of the handrails.
Okay. The, and to the next question, thank you, Dave. The gray multiplex that is shown in these aerials isn't there now. There is a new home being built. Have you looked at, or would you care to comment on headlights? Is there any reason why, in the evening with this new configuration, that, that new home would experience any headlights coming around the corner there?
They will have headlights that go around the corner, no different than its head-in parking now. And currently, if you see this exhibit, we take the parking off that side, because there's a driveway there. We actually gain parking by taking off that side. If you leave the current configuration, it's head-in parking. It goes right into his windows now.
Okay, good point. At the other end, at the bay end, I really like the concept. I think this is a wonderful-looking design. But I also know that that public dock is also a very popular area for the mooring field to access the peninsula. Has there been any thought about any, any amenities to serve the mooring holders, such as dinghy racks or anything at the end? And maybe I would defer to my colleague, Councilmember Duffy, to comment on maybe some needs in, for the mooring field there that might be part of a design here for us to consider. I don't know, but that might be something that we would want to think about.
We did think a little bit about that. We tried to add, again, parking in here, because parking's one of the issues. We put some more trashcans and more decorative in that corner. You notice one of the slides has a bunch of trashcans that come off. We tried to clean that up. We also added bike racks recently, and this would add more bike racks, because some people come to their dinghies off that, so. We could probably look at dinghy racks. That hasn't been talked about yet.
Okay. Two more questions really quickly. I note that on the medians, first of all, I love the, the concept of trees in the medians, just for the heat island effect and cooling the autos that are parked along there. But on some of those medians, from 18th to 16th, and then 16th South, they're very narrow, and they're the only refuge that the pedestrians have, once they've parked their car, to go along that stretch to then reach a crosswalk. Are we certain that by putting in the tree grate and a wider trunk, that there's still the ability for folks to navigate that very narrow area to get to the crosswalks?
We had a lot of discussion on that, and Dan can comment on this, but we do know that the medians will probably not be ADA compliant. And the way we're getting by that is you have street parking on both sides of the street on the other side. The sidewalks on the exterior are ADA compliant, and they have ramps. To try to park and claim ADA in the middle, there's too many posts, there's trees, but you're going to have to maintain parking posts, and they're just not wide enough.
I'm not suggesting ADA compliance. I just, that, I see, you know, whether, regardless of the season, families trying to negotiate that very narrow median as they're trying to get to a crosswalk to cross over towards the beach. If we're introducing new elements to negotiate around, let's just be certain that they're safe and that folks can still walk on that median without having to step off into the street to, to get to the crosswalk.
And just a question. Dan, how big are the diameter of the trunks of those trees at full growth?
Oh, at, at full growth, in that median condition, they'll be six to eight inches, I would think.
Oh, okay.
Our, our test for that was, between 12th and 14th, we, we have the New Zealand Christmas trees in the median planted now.
Right.
And, and we've looked, and people navigate it. You know, it requires you to walk single file and turn a little bit, and there are a lot of obstructions in that median with the parking meters and everything. So, so if you have two chairs and a cooler, and you're holding your daughter's hand, I'd say you're not going to make it. But if you, if you're just walking single file, you can, you can use that safely.
And my last comment, I'm glad to see that Somas is involved in this. Tim Somas is a respected engineer who is involved in sustainable engineering practices. Tim Somas is a respected engineer who is involved in sustainable engineering practices. In fact, I think he's the international leader of, I forget the name of the practice. I'm sorry? Thank you. And I'm wondering, have any of those concepts for sustainable engineering practices where we might reuse or affect the economics of this been implemented so that we have a sustainably engineered process and program here?
Those certainly are important. And one of the goals that I glossed over very briefly was improving water quality. So as part of this, Somas will bring that expertise into how the drainage system works and make sure that we're purifying it to the greatest extent possible.
Well, if there are other opportunities, Dave, I would just encourage you, through either value engineering or the integration of the envisioned program, to sustainably engineer this or to get better, you know, better value out of the program, please, I encourage you to look at that.
We'll look at that.
Thank you, Mayor.
One other comment. In the design of Marina Park, the basin was actually designed so that the very end closest to the ramps are set aside for people and dinghies. So people on the mooring can come in there, tie up, go up the ramp, and then go directly to one of the local restaurants. So in the broader sense, we've been thinking about those people.
Mayor Procham Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, this is really great, and I really appreciate if we do go forward with this, the city's investment in District One. I think the community will be much better as a result. Couple of questions I have. Actually, I know there's some members of the community out in the audience, so I'm sure we'll be speaking. But you mentioned the two public meetings, which are great. I do know, in speaking with some of the residents and business owners, that maybe they appreciate an opportunity to sit down with staff and kind of go through some of the issues specifically as effects on the 15th Street side in terms of the merchants. There's a grocery store there, I believe, just to be sure. And also, I do want to say I'm really excited about the trees. But as you've heard in the past with the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, tree and landscape maintenance is a challenge sometimes to make sure that the trees are watered. Now, if there's an irrigation system, obviously, that's beneficial. But want to be sure that the trees stay as beautiful as that they were intended to. Another question in that area of 15th Street that would be a turnaround, one of the residents asked me if the, if fire trucks and other emergency vehicles would be able to make that turnaround appropriately without restriction or constraint. So I want to be sure that, I'm sure you've looked at that, but just to bring that point forward. And those are my comments. Thank you, if you wanted to respond to any of those.
Just a couple quick, because we had a lot of extensive talk on this. We did run traffic models on this, and we can actually show you that, but the fire trucks will not actually go around this turnaround. The ambulances can, the paramedics, but the large fire trucks, they probably can make, but it would be a challenge. They don't pull up there anyway, they pull straight in. The deliveries, we had a lot of talk about deliveries. The trucks now come in, they park in the middle of the street. We know that's how they're gonna operate in the future. There's just no way to get them in and out. It's a very short street there. We checked with the buses. The school district runs their buses down Balboa. They turn up here, they go down this alley and down to the school. All those fit. And we've also done the turning templates on the other side, too. So as for circulation, we feel that's pretty well. If I could just comment, too, there's probably some comments on the signal. The signal's being upgraded, and we're adding additional right turn, I'm sorry, left turn going on to the beach side, so it'd be eastbound to southbound. We're also adding additional left turn going eastbound to northbound on the other direction, and it's gonna be its own dedicated turn. So there are some conflicts there, and that came up during the public hearings. We also maintain complete circulation on the intersection, so you can make rights and left at all legs, and that's another point. And we're also anticipating, because Marina Park will be exiting on 15th Street, we've done some alley upgrades there, and making it so you can make that left or right coming out of Marina Park.
Councilmember Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment from Councilman Petros asking me to. So on that note regarding the dinghies, it's a good thing to bring up. Thankfully, we do have plans in the Marina Park to accommodate that, which would make a much more satisfactory method for the mooring holders, as well as, it's my hope that we someday can establish a shoreboat there, which would make that mooring field, which is quite large, it's the largest mooring field in the bay, much more user-friendly. Thanks.
And if I could one note on that, you're gonna have an item before you tonight with the award of the Marina Park docks. We're building an entire dinghy bay in the new Marina for that mooring field, which is just a couple hundred feet up the road here.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, thank you, Dan. I'll open it up to public comments, so anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. State your name, please.
Joe Angelo, I live at 1504. I was just wondering, where is the drop-off area?
The drop-off you're gonna see is you'll be able to come in here and park, or they could make a quick drop-off along this area here and move out. That would be, or they could pick up, you could have people waiting here, so they're, for instance, children could be coming down to the beach. But because it's circular now, right now, people just drive in here and they stop, they pull in ahead in and drop off. It adds a little more order to the situation.
Yeah, that's the nature of my comment, too. I see that drop-off probably more than anybody, you're living one house to the top there. So those three parallel parking places, right below where it says new tree planting? Parallel parking?
You're talking about these three?
Yeah, those three.
Correct.
Maybe that should be a two-minute drop-off instead of parallel parking, because the drop-off, I own the Stuff Surfer Cafe, too, so, I mean, I see that drop-off. It doesn't bother me, but it is a bottleneck. It's a huge bottleneck. People just come in there and they unload stuff like you can't believe. They're having a good time. But if that's only one lane, you're thinking they're gonna, if they're dropping off and flow can't keep moving, that's gonna be a problem. So perhaps, perhaps where those three parallel parking places are, there would be a yellow curb that would be drop-off. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Richard Myers, my name, I'm at 1623 West Balboa. And appreciate what you're doing here, and I think it's beautiful. The only comment I have is that the four palm trees that you originally had at the corner of 15th and Balboa were advertised as Phoenix canariensis. And this plan shows a Phoenix dactylactra, dacta something. I don't know how to pronounce it, which is a, you know, completely different tree. So if you can do the Phoenix canariensis, it's a much more rich and luxurious, luxurious tree for that corner. I wouldn't plant them all over the place, but I sure recommend that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mayor members of the council, my name's Grace Dove, and I live at the corner of 15th and Balboa. And I question the bulb out. You'd have a right turn, and then you'd have a through lane. During the summer, this area is total gridlock. There are thousands of people. This is the only restroom on the beach for the whole stretch of the beach from the river to the point. So everybody wants to use this beach. And right now, the limited-time parking at that corner creates an informal right-turn lane. So you have two, three lanes, and you have this third lane. And to impede that would just cause that much more of a backup. Also, please, no beach balls on the corner, because it looks like Target. You'd characterize this as a commercial area. It's actually, there are five businesses on the ocean side of 15th Street, and they are mixed-use, and each mixed-use is owner-occupied. So this is a majority residential area, which is something that should be taken into consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is George Schroeder, and I would like to follow up on what my friend Grace Dove just spoke about, and that's the bulb is pushed out at the corners of Balboa and 15th Street. During the summertime, that intersection is extremely busy with pedestrian, bicyclists, and cars. And so us residents who live in the area, we know what the actual impacts are going to be. I appreciate the planners do the best they can, but the people who live down here, we actually deal with this day in and day out. So I will say that I don't think the bulb is pushed out into Balboa Boulevard is a very good idea, because what we have is, we have all kinds of bicycles driving down the peninsula. The light turns red, we have all kinds of pedestrians there. I don't know what the benefit is to have the concrete pushed out into the street. I do see the gain in that it protects the car parked on 15th Street, kind of that first parking space. But on Balboa, what you're going to have is, when the bicycles come down, they're gonna be pushed into where the cars are driving straight through. So you're gonna have, you know, four or five bicyclists. Right now, they can drive side by side, they can get by. So it's just gonna be jammed up. And if they want to turn right to get to the beach, again, it's gonna be jammed up with the cars. So I don't think it's a, we have bicyclists and car collisions all the time, so to put the bicycles even closer to the cars just doesn't make sense. So I would suggest you, if you want to push it out, don't go out as far into Balboa. And then also, I want to address the trees in the narrow mediums further down. Having lived here for 25 years, I do use that parking island from time to time. During the summer, it does get extremely busy. People come down there to use the beach, they carry their beach chairs and things. It's kind of hard to get across the traffic, so you do have to walk down the island to get to the crosswalks. Okay? It's one thing to get by the little parking meters, they're so big, you can see them. To have additional trees there when you're carrying your beach supplies, I just can't see the advantage is enough to spend the cost to put the trees in. And then also, we do have families coming there, the cars are parked there. To put trees in, it's just gonna make it harder to see the people using those parking spaces. And from time to time, they don't always go to the crosswalk, so they may pop out. So to have huge trees kind of impacting the view plane when there are people using those, I just don't see the net gain. The cost to put them in, you know, it's not that much, but then the cost to have the tremors come for the next 20, 30, 40 years, the irrigation with the drought and all that for that tiny strip. And then we have the planners did a nice job, they say, here's what we have now, we put the trees in, we have this beautiful corridor of green versus all this gray. Well, in actual honesty, you know, we should have a color picture, because there are a lot of beautiful trees up and down the peninsula now on the private property area. So adding this little, you know, thing of trees down that narrow island is not gonna green it up that much, because we have a lot of trees. So I would say, you know, think twice about that, you know, the net gain over the cost, and then also, you know, it just, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Healy. I own property at 1111 15th Street and 11315th Street. They're presently, it's five rentals. Two of them are, well, three of them are at the second-story level with nice views. I sure want to make sure I work with the right people to make sure we have the right kind of trees. Right now, if you were to go to that view that you started with, you know, the one that just looks at the beachside 15th Street. Yeah, that one. Thank you. Anyway, the vision is important, obviously, they pay a premium for those. So I just want to make sure that we do have the right, and would like to work with the city to make sure. I can take photographs of the views, and we just, you know, visualize, do whatever we have to do. Number two is, is that those two alleys that you see there that are in brown are, have been challenges from a safety point of view for decades. The little kids, less than three feet tall, run, you know, they're children, usually their parents are running behind trying to stop them. But it's vitally important that we have the best kind of safety ideas. I don't quite understand texture, but anything to create an environment. As people come down those alleys, their first thought is, can I find a parking spot? Yeah, that's, I think, the whole peninsula is that environment. But anyway, it's critical. I've been, we've worked, we have a, presently, we have diagonal lines to create something more than just a normal kind of alley entrance. But what does texture, can you define texture to me? Is it just, is it little bumps, maybe, or something like that?
It's generally a contrasting pavement, so it gives a person notice there's a change. We wouldn't want to put something like a bump pavement, you'd have rumble strips, it'd be loud.
I'd love to see something like that, but I'll talk more. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Maureen Cotton. I live at 20615th Street. And we did participate in the second forum that you guys had. We thought perhaps there was gonna be another one before this meeting, so a little disappointed there. With regard to the turnaround, I think it's a good idea. I agree with a lot of what the other local residents have said with regard to the safety issues that concern us on 15th Street are tremendous. They're, the stop signs are fairly ignored, both on bay and behind the alley, behind the church, by the school, by the moms, the dads, I'm not gonna differentiate. Those drop-offs are a real problem. We have the alley on the one side of our house, there should be a stop sign there. There, people fly down these streets, and they are not paying attention. Those build-outs, I don't mind a build-out on a curb, but don't put a tree, because it blocks more views. People can't see. As it is, we've seen two or three pedestrians hit by cars right in front of our house in the last 10 years that we've lived there. It's a big concern, and I don't know what your traffic modeling matters. You're gonna have 187 parking spaces 200 feet up the road, and all those people who are supposed to be exiting onto Balboa Boulevard in this, today's meeting, are now, we're finally being told the truth, which is, it's coming out on 15th Street, which means you have 187 families who are going to be not only driving out and down that area, right as you see it on the screen, you're gonna have all those people with all their gear and all their kids, and they're excited about going to the beach. They're not normal beachgoers, most of them, many of them. They're not paying attention. It's, if the safety isn't looked at more than I think has been done, you're gonna have problems. I agree with Joe that parallel parking, it'd be great to have a park, a place to stop, because the people who are gonna go into those diagonal parking spaces, they're taking beach chairs and all sorts of stuff out of their cars, and they're, they can't grab their kids. It's that, I don't know that any of that median parking, that angled parking is even necessary. I don't know why we need to increase the number of parking spaces even on 15th Street, since you've got 187 spots opening up between 16th and wherever it goes. So anyways, it's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Peter Anderson. I've been a, I live at 1610 West Oceanfront and have lived there since 1976. I'm from northern Wisconsin, and when I came and first saw this area, I thought it was a magnificent area, and I continue every day I drive down onto the peninsula to feel that same way. But, you know, I'm happy that you guys are going to renovate this area, because it's really, I think, been neglected. It's a beautiful area, and yet the infrastructure certainly has not been well taken care of over the years. Now we're gonna do something. There's a number of people here that have said, less trees. I say, more trees. You know, I think beautiful, well-taken-care trees are what are gonna make this whole corridor going from the bridge all the way down to Balboa, something that we can be even prouder of than we are right now. You know, I was hoping that this design would have trees on three sides of the road, the median and both sides, as opposed to just the median. I realize that there's a problem with that sidewalk, but I was hoping you could come up with some sort of a workaround so that we could have trees on three sides. You know, this is a strange situation where you have got a major Newport Beach street where you've got parking on four sides, four roads of parking on the street. I mean, I can't think of any other place in the country where there's parking on four sides of the street. I don't know how it happened, who made the decision. It isn't on the west, the Balboa Boulevard that you just fixed, we don't have parking on four sides. You know, we don't have parking on four sides. You know, we don't have parking on four sides of Pacific Coast Highway, but we have it on this street. And it's a sad, I find it sad because I think if we didn't have that, then we could do a lot more, but we can't. It is what it is. But I would ask if we can relook at Balboa Boulevard to see if there can be more trees and on perhaps the sides as opposed to the median. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Elliot Bond, 1607 West Balboa. Comment. Councilmember Petros, I agree. There's possible concern with people with trees in the median there narrower than it is now. It'll make it narrower that they'll scratch cars. I'd like that to just be looked at and thought out a little bit more. And a question. Between 18th and 16th North Side sidewalk, I've heard rumors that there may be meters put in there. Is that true or not? On the North Side sidewalk?
You're talking in front of Marina Park?
Yes.
Yes, that would be eventually metered.
When will that be happening, you think?
It's, I believe it's in the works. We've already had that discussion, I believe. I don't know when the meter's going in. They're waiting for the park to open.
What's the reasoning?
Well, you've got park frontage with meters on both sides, and you've also got, it's not a residential strip anymore. It's a commercial park frontage, so.
We don't have it in the rest of the peninsula, though. Just that little stretch is, are you going to do the whole peninsula on that side, then?
It's just that stretch in front of the park that's being included. Everything else is already metered except for the residential areas on both sides.
Well, the other side is used by residential. If you'll go down there, it's full. It's not full because there's a park there. All those spaces are taken for residential. Most of those people, those residents only have one or two spots. They're older spot, older units. That'd be consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Elizabeth Wiley. I'm a mom at Newportale. And I have a concern about how you're going to implement the adding in new trees and improving the median with lack of parking for parents are already a huge issue at Newportale. Do we know how that's going to happen? What are you going to do about parking while you're doing your, your construction? New trees and signage and all of that? This is a huge issue at Newportale for parking already. You know, we do not have a parking lot. Response?
It would be a phased construction. The median work, we wouldn't be taking out the curbs in the median. It would just be the center, right in front of Newportale, you already have trees there. So they'd be replacing those trees, probably new trees. The parking would be temporarily maintain, or interrupted just when they're working on that median, but it would be maintained during the project. We don't have to replace the parking, basically.
And then what's the timeframe for replacing a tree? How long is that? Is that a day project or is that a month project or?
I can't tell. It could be a week while they're taking that median out. And we've worked with the school before. We'd work around you folks since we've done the alleys around you folks.
And I saw it was scheduled for fall or winter, correct?
It would probably start in fall or winter. We'd have to work that out still.
Okay. Another concern is if you put bigger trees in, my children have walked into the posts in that little tiny median. If you put bigger trees in, there's limited visibility. And just when you drive down the peninsula, sometimes you're trying to turn left at a crosswalk, you can't see pedestrians behind the palm trees. So just something to think about. Also, in front of Marina Park, you took out the third lane that leaves the peninsula. So in busy summer months, when we have huge traffic on the peninsula, I believe it's a hazard to only have two lanes departing. You used to have weekends, holidays, the third lane always exited. You couldn't park there. Now you're putting in pay park spots, it sounds like. So what's going to happen to our traffic impact for leaving the peninsula on those busy, crowded summer holidays and weekends?
We had a whole discussion, a traffic study on that about two years ago, and it's already been out for the last summer.
I understand. I didn't go to that study.
They're finding that it works well.
But I saw the signs removed and so there's no parking there any longer. So that's just all going to be paid parking. Two lanes exiting the peninsula, correct? So the third lane is gone.
Two lanes down to 18th or 19th is what it is now?
Well, from 15th Street, it used to be exiting the peninsula, the right lane was available for holiday traffic to depart.
Yes, that was correct. That was an old plan they had. The council looked at that years ago and they took that out. They found it wasn't necessary.
All right. And let me see if, are you still going to be able to access the beach for like lifeguard trucks on 15th Street? You know, there's a ramp there that you drive up. That's still going to be there? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
Richard Meyer for a replay.
You've already been up, sir. You got one shot.
Okay.
You can, you can talk to the staff.
Staff will be here afterward. You're very welcome to ask them any direct question there.
Okay. Any other speakers? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. Brian Ozone, in Peninsula, resident. Wasn't going to speak on this, but the last speaker talking about that third lane exiting the peninsula is problematic. It's very hard to get off the peninsula, especially during heavy traffic hours. I would encourage you to take another look at opening that third lane up from 15th Street all the way to the pier. I think it's pretty important, especially for the residents. We're trying to get off too. And you may want to look at, you know, the heavy traffic days, the big surf days, getting off is problematic. And if you could capture that lane like you're doing from the new parking lot at where the old Blockbuster video was, you have that street that goes north, you're going to eliminate parking there to get more free flowing traffic. So I'd encourage you to look at that again and eliminate those parking meters and parking and make that a three lane exit on the westbound side of Balboa Boulevard. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this one? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to council. Any other council comments? Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Dave, could you just clarify for me? The parking exit from Marina Park is through that alley on 215th Street. Is that the only exit?
The primary exit, and again, one of the speakers asked that, the primary exit is 16th Street. It's a, it's a right in and a right out. So most of your traffic will be going off of the peninsula and will be using that. There is an access through the alley, and I can, this point right here where you see, this is the actual alley that used to go through. This was a closed alley, and when we approved Marina Park, this is open. What this does is it provides the ability for someone who wants to go down to the point of the peninsula to come out and make a left at the light and go to the point. Yes, you can come out this alley, make a right and a right and go down, but most people will go out 16th and just go right.
Okay. So this is not the main?
This is not the main, but it is an access point now to Marina Park.
Just an additional act. Okay. Thank you.
Just one additional comment I'd have on the, on the medians. Seems with the trees and the medians and all of the meter poles out there, there's a lot of obstacles. Have you looked at maybe doing the one pay station out there for every block or two pay stations and eliminate those poles?
Yes, mayor. Actually, we started with pay stations and our traffic consultant advised us this would be a better place for meters, just the way it's used. And because they're so long to go walk to the pay station all the way down to the end and then go out, they thought it'd be better to keep the meter poles there. But we could relook at that.
Okay. Dave, what kind of direction you're looking for?
Actually, just one more question. Someone raised the issue of how and why we replace the Canary Island palms with a different version. You want to explain that, Dave?
Sure. The Canary Island palms, in fact, we have some of those right here, the phoenixes in front of the Legion Park right here. There is a disease that goes with those palms. We've been struggling with those. They're very large palms, but Canary Island root rot has been taking our palm supply. The new palms they're looking at are the date palm, so they're a little thinner, a little arrier, probably have less visibility impacts. So the architect and our mod staff are recommending using the date palms versus the Canary Island.
Okay. So Dave, do you feel like you have direction or would you like additional direction from the council?
I'd just like to make sure the council is inconsistent. Seeing we have a new council members on this. This is an expensive project. It's about $4 million right now. We're in the concept stage. We'll start looking at it. We want to make sure you feel comfortable with all the items. Do we have enough trees? Not too many, too little? Have we pavement access and things like that? Does that meet what your goals are in this area? I think we've heard in the general public generally meet that. It meets what the citizens advisory panel wanted. And just looking for your general feedback on that.
Well, just speaking for myself, it seems like there's some details that need some further refinement on it, but it's certainly in concert with the policy and the direction that the council has set previously on the peninsula and all the enhancements, improvements we want to do out there. So that'd be my comment. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
And I agree. Thank you.
Councilmember Petros, did you?
Yeah, I would, I think that there are some details that do need to be ironed out. Conceptually, I think you're spot on, Dave. From, from the years that I've been part of this, I am concerned about the trees in those medians and might want to take a look at rationalizing them so that they don't present problems for folks that are getting out of cars. If you could just please take a look at that. I heard that the, the beach ball might not be the best ballard. What are some, some other thoughts? I saw the surfboard as another look. I think that there should be something whimsical and beachy, but no, we don't want to make this look like Target. I concur with that.
We'd be open to your suggestions, anything you like. We gave you several examples.
And then, and then now we're, now we're picking out the carpet and the curtains. But I do think that it's important when we look at the street furniture that it not be inviting for overnight stays. Some of those benches had the center rail. I was appreciative of that. Let's, let's keep that mindful as we move forward.
If I could add one more thing on clarification. I heard a couple speakers today talk about concerned about the bulb outs. You'll find that traditional in a lot of intersections in old towns, we do that. It provides additional areas for the pedestrians to stand on. It does provide some traffic calming. It reduces the crosswalk width a little to get the traffic through on the lights. Those are both parking lanes on either side. So we're really taking the red curb portion of that area and making a bulb out. And if I remember right, the bulb out is either five or six feet wide. So we still leave two or three feet, which is the bike lane because you have an eight foot parking lane that normally goes there. So we have looked at that. We think it's fine. Our traffic staff have extensively looked at that, and we're real comfortable with the bulb outs.
Seeing no other comments, I want to thank all the people that came down to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I did put in my request to speak. You didn't get it?
Okay. Well, it came in at the last second. Go ahead.
Comments? My only comment is I'd like to see how it fits in the overall FPP or FFP as we go into the next budget year. So I presume that it's included in this year's budget to finish the design aspect of it.
Yes, but construction is still not budgeted yet, so that would come back to you as a separate decision.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it'll be part of your capital improvement program coming. It's not an FFP project, but it will be in our general CIP project.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
Well, I would just, yeah, there we go. First of all, I just want to say this, I think, is an excellent project for the community. Former Mayor Hen got the ball rolling on this. I'm very pleased that the Mayor Pro Tim Dixon is picking this up and moving forward. It's part of our overall strategy to revitalize the peninsula. It's very, very important.
Any other comments? Okay. So we'll move on to the next item, study session, item number four, which is the action steps relative to utility undergrounding. This is a follow up to our last meeting on January 27th on this.
Good evening, Mayor. Mark Vikojevich, the city engineer and deputy public works director. I'm pleased to be back here with you this afternoon to continue our discussion regarding underground utility assessment districts, UUADs. It's a mouthful. I have several slides I want to, that we, that I showed you last time and then a couple new ones as well, too. This is just a quick update. District 111 is making substantial progress on their petition gathering. That's a district near Newport Boulevard and Balboa Boulevard. And last, two weeks ago, they were at 40% collecting their petitions. This week, they're at 50%. So they're making substantial progress. And, and there hasn't been much movement on the other districts. I shared with you this, you know, slide, you know, there's several categories of policy guidance that we're looking for. And in particular, in this category of city facilitation, you know, should the city continue to host additional meetings regarding undergrounding? Should we be sending out postcards and mailings and outreach? And should city council create a policy supporting undergrounding districts? The other category was regarding the petition process and reducing the petition process from 60% to something lower. This, you know, we think that 60% is a real good indication of if the properties will actually approve the ballot assessment. So it's a real good kind of temperature test upfront, but there is the burden of collecting those things, and it's particularly difficult. So less than 60% is an option for you. 50% is, is, is the, the minimum that would be required to still be compliant with the existing laws and acts. This just came out yesterday, too, just an example that, you know, just as many folks that support these, there's, there's folks that oppose these. And this was one that was sent to our attention. You know, so there's, there's a lot of movement in opposing districts, too. So just back to emphasize the sensitivity and the balancing point that there is with these districts and the petitions and the cost. Because at the end of the day, this is a financial decision for property owners. Policy guidance on how can we better do this to reduce costs and, and build this thing quicker? So we talked about some of the efforts that we do to look for economies of scale. We still think there's, there's avenues to pursue to reduce the cost with Edison and the telecoms, and we would like to continue that pursuit. We threw out the concept of above ground transformers and switches. There may be some cost savings there, too. In reality, they're always difficult to locate. Again, we're talking about big, large, green boxes out in parkways or in medians, and they're, they're tough to find spaces to put those in. We've heard a lot about, you know, are there, is there a different alternative to deliver the construction? And then as well as, you know, subsidizing the district formation costs.
Can you be more specific on the alternative delivery methods?
Sure. So here's an example here, too. If the city were to actually go forward and construct, so there is an option where the city can, can construct all of the undergrounding conduit and trenching work, all of the basic infrastructure, and then have the cable companies and Edison come in and pull their wires and install their transformers and, and do all of their cabling and hookups. So this is an option. There are some cities that do this. It may save costs and, but there are things to consider, too, because as part of that, the city would have to ramp up with consultant help and inspection and administrative costs and time to build these things. We need to incorporate, just like we do in all other projects, prevailing wage and public contract code requirements. We then take on the risk, too, for any unknowns. So as opposed to, let's say, if Edison gives us a price, if something happens, you know, that price is fixed. If we decide to build it and bid it, which we certainly can, anything that happens unknown wise or any changes, we assume the risk for that. And then there's a component we don't know because we haven't tried this yet, is what is, what is Edison and what are the utility companies going to charge us for all their inspection and administrative time, as well as all of their cabling costs and things like that, too? So this is a potential option that we're willing to pursue, you know, but it's just going to take us some more time. And really, it takes a district to be live and hot and ready for us to be able to go[1679.16] So this is a potential option that we're willing to pursue, you know, but it's just going to take us some more time. And really, it takes a district to be live and hot and ready for us to be able to go out there and actually design it and get estimates and do some comparisons. Conceptually, it's hard to tell. I would like to stand here before you today and tell you that, yes, we could always do it cheaper and better, but the proof will be in the pudding once we have a hot project. So financial options, we've heard a lot of discussion about this, too. What are the financial options for owners when an assessment district comes into place? And so the first one, and typically, we see somewhere around 40 percent of folks do what's called prepay. So they get a little bit of a 10 percent discount in prepaying, and they use-- You know, we've heard stories, people use, you know, whatever money they have in the bank. They pull investments. They, you know, refinance their car. They, you know, get personal loans, home equity. We've heard of folks getting reverse mortgages. There's all kinds of private equity loans out there for folks to do that. But what we do on the city end is we do this generic, you know, 10 or, excuse me, 15- to 20-year assessment. So we try to make it as low as possible, spread over a long period of time, to make it somewhat affordable. And there is no qualification process. Literally, there is no paperwork process to do that. It just comes with your tax bill, and you do have to pay it. Another option is to extend it out further to 30 years. That could lower the amount. And then also, the state has come back with what's called their property tax postponement program, and that'll be available in 2016, and I think that'll be, you know, in good time with, you know, an upcoming district.
Mark, I got a question there.
Yes.
Can you go back? Is it really on the assessment prepayment only a 10 percent discount? For some reason, I thought it was more substantial like that than that. Is that really what it's been?
Yeah. Approximately, so. What it is, it's the actual costs of that transaction are specifically deducted, so it's an actual amount. It's an open book amount. It's not, you know, sign here and we'll give you a deal. It's not one of those things, you know? And so here's an example of a typical process. So this is a $20,000 assessment. You know, if you prepay within a 30-day window, we can make that window longer. It could be 45 days, it could be 90 days. Then that upfront cost could be reduced by 10 percent. Over 15 years, as you can see, it's, you know, $1,700 a year. Over 20 years, $1,400. And then, you know, we have some examples in terms of how much that is per month, too. Now, the other component of the cost is the property hookup. So there is, you know, one piece of fortunate information here is that there is time to try to figure that out. I mean, it takes somewhere from once the district is formed, 12 to 24 months from when you actually need to obtain that hookup. So you have time to get bids. You have time to look and see what other financial options you may have for your own personal finances, you know? The municipal code does allow for time extensions, and under the worst-case scenario, if the city has to, the city, you know, will host a hearing and perform the connection itself and then lean your property. However, that's not recommended. But, you know, and then the state comptroller's office, you know, the property tax postponement program, too. Although this can't be directly used for this hookup, you know, if there's a true financial struggle there, too, that provides some benefit relief on your regular property taxes that may allow you to perform this hookup. The other item was the policy guidance on city-owned land, in particular parks and fire stations, and we have a summary slide here that kind of lays out an example of a possible policy change where possibly the city's finance director or the city manager is given authorization to sign the petition for city-owned land. The vote would ultimately still be held by city council at the time the district is ready. And of course, we always look--
Can you go back?
Yes.
On that last bullet point, you say that up to 10 percent. Is that something that's in state law or something?
No.
So what, how does--
That was a suggestion that we received, you know, maybe 10 percent is a good rule of thumb, you know, because we wouldn't want to, you know, create a district where we took up, you know, 50 percent of it and then, you know, force a situation on folks. It could be something different. It's not a law, though. And then leverage opportunities, too. You know, what else could we do to save costs where we can combine, you know, or look at similar designs for 28 and 20B projects like we're doing on Balboa Peninsula? You know, we would still love to pursue, you know, purchasing other 28 agency credits because we think that's a great option for citywide beautification and whatever else we can do to facilitate these districts. So in summary, you know, we've put out a few of these ideas here, too, in terms of continuing to host meetings regarding these districts. Sometimes they're well-received, and sometimes we really have folks that don't like them, you know, because of the opposition. But at the end of the day, you know, they're a good thing to have these meetings, and we'd like to continue to do those. Amending the council policy L-28, you know, maybe there's a general statement in support of districts, authorizing the city manager or the finance director to sign petitions. We would love to, you know, keep working with Edison and telecoms to reduce the cost. We think there's options there and to speed the process. Pursuing 28 agency credits and then also kind of advertising the state's program for property tax postponement. And the property tax postponement does include assessment and other levies that would be in your tax bill.
Could you explain that program a little bit more?
Sure. It has-- They had a similar program in place in years past, and I forgot the exact year, but a few years ago, they disbanded it. But the governor has reinstated the program, and basically, if you meet certain age requirements or if you have certain disabilities, but you still have equity in your home and you have a low, you know, low income, then you could apply for this program, and you can defer your taxes on an annual basis. And I, you know, in my mind, it kind of, you know, equates to some sort of, you know, reverse mortgage thing, but it's controlled by the state. You know, the terms of the loan are not, you know, ideal. They're 7 percent. They're expensive, but this is, you know, it is a last resort option. Certainly, private financing would be a better method.
Councilman Curry?
Does somebody make whole the school districts in the city and the county while this is going on?
Yes, the state does.
State does. So then the property owner then basically has a loan from the state, which the state will collect upon his death, presumably.
That's correct. And then the state will take, you know, lien priority on their title and all that good And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to get some comments and--
Okay. Any questions or comments from council before I open it up for public comment? Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
Thank you, Mark.
Not yet. We'll call for it, sir.
Thank you. Financing continues to be a conundrum, so I continue to look for ways to-- Can we bundle these, project out for 20 years, the projects that the city could be doing, and then we kind of bundle them from a bond financing? I don't know if that mechanism or vehicle would exist. Maybe Dan knows that as well. And also, on the timeline, from the time a petition is validated with the 60 percent signatures, what is the projected time to signed, sealed, and delivered, undergrounding completed? What would that be?
It'll be about four years, four to five years.
I've heard up to seven years.
Yes. I mean, in some cases, it takes seven years. I mean, we have districts that we've seen that take two years just to collect petitions. And so, you know, that is a function of it, too. You know, just graphically, the design of once we have a project in place and city council authorizes and does a budget amendment to move forward with this, we pay the, you know, Edison and the utilities to design it. You know, that takes about 18 months to two years. Can we speed that up? I certainly think we can. From there, it goes to a vote, and then there's a process of voting and assessments, and then we can begin immediately going into construction. And construction, depending on the size, could take another two years as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And with respect to bundling bond financing, certainly, that can be done if the projects are moving along the same course. The issue becomes spending down the bond proceeds. You need to be able to spend at least 80 percent of the bond proceeds within three years, so the projects substantially need to be on the same track.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, time for public comments. Sir, come on up.
I'm Gail Demmer, and I live in Zone 118. And I'm one of those people that can tell you that we're not hot and ready to start this project. I know that you've heard probably so many reasons why there is an opposition to this project, and our opposition is growing. And one of them is, of course, the cost. And the cost is very, very important to us, no matter how intricate it can get, how many years down the line we can pay. Some of them, in my viewpoint, will be dead and gone by the time the 30 years is up, and we shouldn't be worrying about this. But the point of it is, this will take, as we know, three, four, five years to initiate this. What will be the cost then? Government, the cost of government, and the projects never get smaller, as you know. They always, always get bigger. And for those of us, and there are many of us like myself, who have lived in the Heights a long time, is now widowed on a fixed retired income, and this is a project that we have lived with telephone poles, I have, for 45 years. And how does this affect my property? Well, I bought my property in 1971. I don't have to worry about how my property has increased, because you all know that. I live in one of the most beautiful cities in America, as far as I'm concerned, and my property has risen with all those telephone poles. And there are most of them in my alley. So please, I stand here a little bit cynical about government today and their projects. I think I live kind of in that time and era of cynicism about government and government spending. If I can keep it out of my pockets, I know that I can still stay here and live in this most beautiful city of the world. And I am not interested in this project. I have a dear neighbor who's also retired and lives behind me, and he said-- And we're all talking about it in Newport Heights. You can believe that. And he said to me, sure, I'd like to get rid of my telephone pole in my alley. I'd like to keep the birds from you-know-what on top of my car, but for $25,000, I can wash my car every day. And that's the way many of us retired people, I think, and not only just retired people. Some of us are feeling about the cost, and I do thank you for giving me the opportunity. I would like to say that the city staff has been admirable in telling us about this. I did have many talks with them. Transparency is very important, and I did tell Mr. Senicore that he needs to come right forward and tell us about the options that are before us. And I understand that some of the options, we can underground these utilities by the block. I live on Cliff Drive. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Brian Ozoni, and I also own property on Balboa Island, as you know. And I spoke to you before, and I'm discouraged that staff hasn't paid more attention to the letter that I wrote and the comments I made. First, before I forget, I recommend that you recommend to the staff that we form an ad hoc committee to study this a little more carefully. There's a lot of options, especially the last study session, about ideas like deferring until death or property sales, various things, and there are many to go into, and I think it behooves you to take a look at this. I'll volunteer to be on the committee. Second to that, 60 percent of the people driving up 100 percent to pay the cost doesn't sit well. I recommend it, as you know, to be 80 percent. I think it's unfair that it's 60. I don't know if it's a state law. Maybe it is. I'm not sure. Do you know, is it a state law, 60 percent for the petition? Can you answer that?
The bare minimum would be 50 percent to be compliant with what's written in the Streets and Highways Code and the Assessment Acts.
So we could go higher. I think it's your discretion on that. But, and I don't mean to just pick on Balboa Island. I think this ad hoc committee can look at the policies throughout the city and be specific to Balboa Island also. Not addressed was the engineering I brought forth about the problem of submerging power underwater. Sorry to hear there wasn't a staff report on that comment. I hope that staff takes it seriously when we make comments. We're not up here because we have nothing else to do. Surely, we're trying to protect our wallets, because that's a big reason people come to city council meetings, when they see a threat to their income, and this definitely is. Very problematic doing the private property side, and there's no way to finance that other than a person putting on a credit card or paying out of pocket right away. Was that my signal? Oh, no, I saw more. Anyway, I just encourage you to take another look at this in an ad hoc way. There's a lot of professionals that have been retired that are very skilled in construction processes. I'm one of them, and be willing to donate some time to help with this and to get more input. I don't know where all the meetings are that we're talking about. Maybe you're just having the meetings in the districts being formed, but for the people that lie in wait, this is a looming problem, and if it takes five or six, seven years, people that currently aren't retired, they may be retired when this happens, and they'll take a whole different look at it and say, what happened? Another point is, are we going to be taxed as property owners on the improvement? You know that, because you're talking about the state deferring taxes. Will we be assessed additional taxes because we underground?
You wouldn't be assessed additional taxes. You'd be basically determined what the benefit is to the property, and that's what you pay. What they're talking about as far as the tax is basically, there's an opportunity by the state that they are starting on September 1st, 2016, where you could not pay your taxes and defer those, but you pay interest on that.
But you're getting a permit, so permits usually associate with an increase in tax. So if you're certain with that, I'd like to know, like Little Balboa Island when they did their underground. Anybody taxed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I personally don't expect ever to be voting on one of these underground decisions, because I live in an area of the city where the utilities have been underground from the start, but the two-week interruption in the discussion gave me an opportunity to form an opinion about a couple of the proposals that I heard at the last meeting, and I would like to express my conclusions about those. I would like to say that I'm against the idea of lowering the petition threshold, and I'm against the idea of having the city vote in the final decision on the undergrounding. First of those, because lowering the petition threshold, as Mark implied, is going to involve all of the city's taxpayers in picking up the expense of more and more cases in which a petition is started, but ultimately, the undergrounding never happens, and all of the taxpayers have to pay the expense of the study, the meetings, and the preparation for that. I'm against the city participating in the final vote, because I think the intention of the vote and the intention of our current code is we do not want the city and the council imposing its aesthetic view on the public, but rather let the public, as we have heard, decide for themselves whether they think the benefit to them is worth the cost to them. And I think allowing the city to vote skews the result improperly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Tom Baker. I live in Newport Heights, which is District 118, Tony Petro's district area. And initially, I would like to say that District 118, there's a site set up, which is noundergrounding.com, an internet site, so residents can oppose this rather than submitting their card to the city. And so I'm concerned very much that you're looking at reducing the 60 percent to 50 percent, because just like the gentleman before, you're going to have 50 percent of the people imposing a financial obligation on 100 percent of the people. 60 percent is the minimum number. You might even contemplate raising it. You know, we get-- The concern is, in our district, looking at this assessment, there was no mention about the city having votes because of its parcels. We do not know how our commercial parcel is going to be handled. Are they going to pay the same amount? Do they have a reduced amount? You know, so a district is set up, and we don't get this information. As a matter of fact, the council is trying to resolve it with the staff as to what the policy is. My understanding is that if the 60 percent of the cards are submitted, that this will authorize the city to spend $400,000. Is that a correct figure, Dave? Do you know, to pursue this?
It depends on the project, Mr. Baker.
What is District 118? What is the estimate to go out?
Mark, do we have an estimate yet?
We don't have an estimate, but I would-- Looking at the numbers, that valuation's a $12 million project. $400,000 is probably a good--
You know, that's a lot of money to spend, and to have 50 percent determine that is, to me, doesn't make sense. The postcard that was sent to us was very vague. I don't know if anyone on the council has seen it. Tony, I believe you have. It's very vague. It talks nothing about the $400,000. Talks nothing about how our commercial parcel is going to be handled. Will the city have actually a 10 percent? You know, you're putting the city as a potential swing vote, imposing their will upon the resident. I mean, it-- You know, we've seen too much government imposing upon the people. I would hope that this-- I would hope that this, the city would not have a significant vote, or would have proportional to the lot sizes, you know, a 10%.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Simon. I reside at 2420 First Avenue in Corona del Mar. I believe I'm in Mr. Piotters' district. I'm here to urge the city to lower the threshold to 51%. I believe that this is a vote. It should be carried with a majority, and I think 51%. If it's good enough for an election in the United States, it's good enough for an issue such as this. I also feel that the city should vote their parcels. I feel that the city's owner of that parcel, and they have the right to say what's to be done with it. If it has to be a vote amongst the council and the majority of the council rules, then that's the way it should be, and the city should vote on those parcels. I've lived at my property and owned it since 1994. I've raised three children here in Corona del Mar, and I've spent countless hours in Begonia Park, which has three poles that all tilt like that. For many years, it hasn't happened, but I'm definitely afraid that one of those poles is going to fall over and injure somebody. I think it's a hazard, aside from the aesthetic problems. I've read several studies from municipalities across the country that say that underground utilities are five times less likely to fail than above-ground utilities. And in a place where there are earthquakes, I think that might not be a bad idea, not to have one of those poles come tumbling down on somebody. So, I'm here to urge the city to vote in favor when they vote on districts, and I'm here to encourage the city to vote when there's a vote on a district. And I'm here to encourage the city to lower to 51% the threshold, because I think 51% is a majority, and I think that that's sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Woodman, property owner at 600 Begonia Avenue here in Corona del Mar. Mayor Selich, city council, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm focusing my comments on two program concerns: reducing the timeline for completion and city support for city-owned land. Reducing the timeline for completion. Currently, the city's process to complete an assessment district can take upwards of six years, which you've already heard. For example, the signature gathering for AD 117, which is our district, is nearing completion. The city identified a timeline for completion for our district of 2021. Time delays serve to increase cost, reflecting on increased assessment to property owners. There are many possibilities for shortening what many deem an unnecessarily long timeline. The elimination of the petition and possible construction management of the undergrounding by outside contractor should be considered. An option would be the dedication of a city staff member to assessment districts. In regards to city land, as I understand it, the city had a longstanding policy to pay assessments on city-owned land, notably parklands. The city recently reversed this practice in the case of the Balboa Island. The city should return to its former policy. This requires the city to pay its share of the assessed undergrounding cost, and thereby reducing the assessment to property owners. It also ensures that poles and wires over city properties are also removed. In the case of Begonia Park, there are two telephone poles, one adjacent to the children's play equipment and overhead wires. And thank you very much for the opportunity to contribute to your study session.
Thank you. Just one point of clarification on that. When the city changed the policy in regards to Balboa Island, it only regarded voting on the city property. It didn't affect the assessment. So, in any assessment district, the city would be assessed just as any other property is. Okay, any other comments? Come forward, please.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time, for listening to me. I'm Dr. Richard Testor. I'm a retired physician who lives at 3 San Mateo Way in the Spiglars Hill area. My home is about two minutes' walk to San Joaquin Hills Road. And two or three mornings a week, I walk up that fairly steep incline for my aerobic conditioning. Over the decades, I've had a chance to see the area over and over again. The homeowners association spends a lot of money manicuing those slopes and making them look nice, but the ambiance is destroyed by those ugly wooden telephone poles that jut up out of their carefully manicured vegetation. On the other side of the road is Buck Gully, which I consider beautiful. It's natural, beautiful boulders, natural vegetation. So, that part of it looks okay. But the telephone poles are a real problem to me, because of the beautification issue. That's also an entrance point to Newport Beach, to Corona del Mar, San Joaquin Hills Road. It, a lot of people enter our community through that area, and they have a good look at that area over and over. Just this morning, in my computer, I got an email from the Corona del Mar Residents' Association, telling me that this meeting was to be held today, so I'm here at the last minute. But it lists a criteria for Rule 28, unusually heavy concentration of overhead facilities. I don't know what that means, but there is an unbroken string of ugly telephone poles. Heavily traveled area, nobody can argue about San Joaquin Hills Road being a heavily traveled area, and I think it may qualify as a major collecting road in the future if we use it to bypass Corona del Mar traffic. That's another one of the criteria. Within or passing through a recreational or scenic area. Well, Buck Gully is beautiful. At the peak of the San Joaquin Hills Road, there's a lovely little park called Canyon View. People park there. They can look out at the ocean, see Catalina. I did, I've done some painting there myself. Your favorite bicycle area, you can hardly walk up that road, but you don't see bicyclists on both sides of the road. I guess my question is, I've talked to Mr. Ossienega, I don't know if he's still on the staff or not. He was a city engineer since 2007, being told it'll be five years in the future, it'll be 10 years in the future. Now, most recently, I'm told it'll be maybe about 220, before it's even considered to remove those and underground those utilities. I don't know where we are now. I just thought I'd ask.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm here to speak to.
Your name, please.
Josh Yoka in Balboa Island. I'm here to speak to essentially moving against any sort of changes to the 60% requirement of petitions, and I have a few reasons as to why. You know, as we know, and as staff has stated, it can take literally up to two years to gather petitions. And on Balboa Island, if you look at the vote that took place in 2009, they gathered their petition requirement of 60% of, I believe, just under 1,100 households there. So, if you give someone two years, there may be the possibility they get a hold of everyone. So, I, it's happened before. I can't see why it can't happen again. The other note I would like to share with you is, the city has made efforts to make the petition gathering process a little less laborious. If you look on the city's website, the city has an acknowledgement memo that the gatherers of petitions are essentially waiving the right to have a notary present to have the petition signed. So, and the reason I bring that up is, when you have, in the case of Balboa Island in 2009, you had 60% of its residents requesting a petition process, and yet, the vote lost in essentially a 51, 49% vote. 21 of the ballots, and this is from the city attorney's office when it came to the ballot count, there were, I'm sorry, 19 duplicates that they had in the vote, in the vote itself. So, you can, in the vote, and if you look, it's an interesting piece from, I think it's the May 12th, 2009, the city's study session minutes here, or staff report for that meeting. You can vote essentially with pencil, you can send in your ballot with a fax machine. So, there really isn't much of an authentication procedure when it comes to that, outside of what we've already waived, and effectively, that's the petition process. We're saying, hey, you don't need a notary. You can bring this in, and we'll take, yes, sir, we're not calling you a liar or anything like that, you got it. But in the sense of Balboa Island in 2009, you know, the vote was turned down. So, that's a point I'd like to bring up, that there have been modifications made to make it easier for people to collect petitions. Also, another note I hear brought up by staff and also concern residents is for fixed income. Residents on fixed income, homeowners on a fixed income that can't necessarily afford the assessment. What I'd like to make sure we're addressing correctly, that it's a fixed income concern, fixed income, not necessarily a low-income concern. If we look here at the State Controller's Office and their property tax rules, I'll just read to you their eligibility requirements. You have to be at least 62 years of age, or blind, or disabled, own and occupy the property as his or her principal place of residence, and have a total household income of $35,000 or less. So, if we were to look at, for example, if there were a widow present in the room, and she was drawing on social security, and there, maybe she could qualify under that $35,000 number. But let's say she has an extra back apartment, she rents a back apartment, and that back apartment bumps her above $35,000. There's no way to afford her any sort of help or alleviation from this. So, please take those considerations in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Good afternoon. I'm Patty Gorsika, proponent for Assessment District 117 located in Corona del Mar. Mayor Selich, city council staff, thank you for the second chance to present before your city council today on, in this study session. I'd like to say, like many in this room, I strongly support the lowering of the signature gathering for the petition to 50%. I do hear other speakers who are arguing for 60%. You can kind of conclude that those who are arguing for the 60% are not bearing, they're opposed to the effort going forward, and they're looking for a higher threshold. The problem for all of us who are required to do the signature gathering as part of the process is, we are given data from the county that comes, you know, to the city, and in many cases, there's, it lacks address, it has PO box, it has no phone number, it has no email addresses, and you are through your own, with your own money, writing letters, Googling, doing white-page searches and so forth, trying to locate non-resident property owners. And what you'll find, and especially in areas that have heavy rentals, we have a part of our area that is more owner-occupied, and we've had an easier time there. We decided to add two more streets to complete all the way to Avocado, and we ran into the issue of rentals. And the signature thresholds we have in these two areas are very different. We are at the 60% in our core area, but if you look at the two additional streets with the heavy rentals, we are far less. And so, that is what you come across. And if you're looking at about a 10% or more opposition, 35% of non-resident property owners you can't reach, do the math, it's, you can't get to the 60%. And so, that's why when you see the itemization of districts and their percentages to date, I would think you could conclude from some of those that are lower, that they are struggling with areas that have high rentals. And so, you know, that's really, you're trying to introduce a universal application across areas that have different characteristics. From our perspective, we think that from the effort of those trying to gather signatures, 50% is fair, like Mark Simon in our group had mentioned. If 51% is fair for an election, why wouldn't it be fair to show interest to the city? I wanted to bring to your attention, too, that we have seven people from our Assessment District in attendance. We've not asked them all to trot up and show support, but I want you to know that we have seven here in support of moving forward with the recommendations that I'm mentioning. Cost is an issue. I've mentioned in the last meeting that when you look at the average of assessments on the nine districts on your matrix, they averaged $21,000, which is quite a movement from assessments in the past. It might have been $7,000 to $10,000. I mentioned to you, when you look at bonds, bonds seem to be the option identified, but it does carry a lot of costs associated with it, and I do think we should look further at options. And thank you for the opportunity to present.
Mayor Selich, council, staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I spoke, if you recall, I spoke two weeks ago on a couple subjects, and I have two other subjects I'd like to speak on.
State your name, please.
Terry Jansen. I live on Balboa Island, and I'm a proponent for underground utilities. There's a segment of our population on Balboa Island that's not one of the rich kids. They're people that have inherited their house, they may be real estate wealthy, they may be strapped for cash, they may be on fixed incomes, that really can't afford the connection fee or the assessment. And I would really urge the city to participate in this deferred assessment district program. I think it would really help the, help us with the opportunity of getting underground utilities, and would certainly help the people that are strapped for cash. And the second thing I would like to talk about, and I'm not really sure that this is the place or the audience to speak to this, but we also have a group of people on Balboa Island that have a very high cost to hook up their utilities. Brian is one of those, and he spoke two weeks ago about this subject. I would really urge staff, along with the cooperation of Edison, to think out of the box and do something different for these people, so they don't have this high cost. And one solution to that would be to isolate a few poles on these properties and put the connection overhead rather than underground. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Dester, from Balboa Island. I wasn't going to say anything, but I listen to a lot of folks here, and this issue of 50% versus 60% or any other percent is just a, I don't understand what, what is their concern? The concern is only of the city, in the sense that, at a certain level, the city has to go and spend some money with the assurance that eventually, it'll pass. So, if the city was to say, okay, 50% is okay, and you go ahead and spend $400,000, that does not guarantee that the project will go through. That's what happened on Balboa Island. So, it's just an insurance policy. I'm in favor of undergrounding, and I'd like to find a way to get undergrounding done at Balboa Island. The problem with the process is, if you go today and say, okay, we're going to get undergrounding done for $15,000 a property, and 60% of the people sign up, four years later, you come back and you say, oh, oh, now we have the actual cost, and it's going to cost $20,000. Suddenly, the 60% goes down to 50% or 45%. So, this two-step process is the issue. When you are going and looking for votes, and whether it's 50, 60, 70, whatever percent, it doesn't guarantee you anything. It just says, we think enough of the people will vote in the end, or we'll get the 50% threshold, if the price is what they thought it was going to be. In the case of Balboa Island, we thought we were voting on $12,000 a property, and then, when the time came to finally agree to going ahead, it came to $18,000 a property. And it ended up costing the city, I don't know, $500,000 or whatever it was, for no reason. So, that's why one should consider that aspect of it, rather than, you know, a person's right to something based on a 50% vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, city council members, and city staff, thank you for talking about this subject. I am a fairly new resident.
Your name, please.
My name is- My name is Don Whitaker. I live at 604 and 1/2 Acacia. I'm known as an alley person. I live in a back alley. The alley access for ingress and egress for emergency vehicles would be greatly enhanced if we did do the undergrounding of the power lines. There is that safety, that to be able to maneuver vehicles in the alley. I know that being a, a new homeowner here, I, my property taxes are about $13,000 a year. So anything you can do to facilitate burying these power lines, I think you should. The, the back alley residents, they, we are important, we exist, and even the, the people on the front side of the street, they have to go through the alley to get to their garages. So safety is a concern. I think it should be, you should know from the get-go how the city is going to support the district, and, and that's important to, to make the process flow easier. So anyways, I, I am in support of undergrounding, and I hope you will, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, my name's Bill Willis. I live on Balboa Island, and I am a supporter of underground. The two main issues, the 50%, the 60%, have been discussed thoroughly. But the one thing on the handling of city-owned properties, I believe the city should make a choice, one way or the other. If they're not going to vote the property, they should also take it out of the petition portion. Because right now on Balboa Island, there are large properties that count towards the 60% petition drive. And if the city's not going to sign the petition, I believe they should take that out of the base. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Last call. Okay, bring it back to council for discussion. I think staff is looking for some guidance from us. We've heard a lot of different opinions on this subject today. We've got these five bullet points that are on the screen and in front of us, and I think the two major things we've heard is the lowering of the petition threshold, and then also what the city's policy would be in voting our own property, and then also signing the petition in support of a, of an Assessment District. So who we have here? Mr. Pieter?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As I said before, I really like this whole self-help concept, so I'm way in favor of this. I would like to see the city continue the meetings. I would like to see, I have no problem staying with the 60%, but I would like to have the city's property automatically be a, a yes on the petition. Obviously, no more than 10% of the total vote. I'd love to see the city figure out if they can do the engineering, drawings, and construction quicker than Edison. Yes, Edison will give us a price, and if there's a problem, they have to eat it. On the other hand, they set up the price to cover those kinds of contingencies, and we pay for it even if they don't have a problem. So I think that we can do it cheaper. I'm not sure if Edison has the same prevailing wage requirements, so maybe, maybe they can do it cheaper. I don't know. But certainly, we can do it faster. And I've used private utility consultants on projects, and built projects for undergrounding, and I can do it a whole lot quicker and cheaper than Edison can do it. So I'd love to see that happen, bring down some of the pricing. And I'd also like to see the city explore options as far as potential financing. If there's a way to finance, you know, work with a local bank, or something along those lines, where we can finance even some of the onsite improvements, and have it be in agreement between the, you know, farmers and merchants, or whoever the, the vendors are, to be able to get loans for, for residents. I'd like to see that kind of facilitation as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Curry?
Well, here we go again, talking about issues that may not have any problems with them. Now, just come up with new ideas. I will tell you my view on this. First of all, I'm a supporter of undergrounding. I think it's good for the neighborhoods. I think it's good for property values, and I think it's good for public safety. On the other hand, I, I'm a strong supporter of the status quo. I think the 60, first of all, the 60% threshold is for a petition that comes to the city, so that we can then do the engineering, which does cost several hundred thousand dollars. And that's a, as was characterized, I think, by Jim, an insurance policy to make sure there is adequate public support. Because as we've heard here today, in a lot of our neighborhoods, there is not adequate public support to move forward. And I think we need to assure ourselves and the community that there is that expression of support to move forward. The additional 10%, by the way, is another 117 signatures on Balboa Island, or 27 signatures in 117. So it's not an onerous burden to ask for that to happen. That allows us to do the engineering, so that people, when they vote on the assessment, have the most up-to-date and accurate data as to what the actual cost is going to be. And the state law says that's a 50% voter threshold, and I agree with Jim that that's, that's state law, and that's what it ought to be. And if voters vote for it and you don't like it, then it's your neighbors who imposed it on you, not the city council. But that's what neighborhood democracy is about in making this happen. I do agree with the one speaker, if, if, how the city votes its, or not, doesn't vote its, its votes affects the, the skewing of how many signatures do you need, we need to take that out of the equation. But I'm also a very strong opponent against the city voting and putting its finger on one side of the scales on these neighborhood debates. The Balboa Island Assessment District last time lost by four votes. Now, I think this community was poorly served by not going forward with undergrounding. That's why they're back doing it today. But had the city voted, and the city could have voted to overturn that decision, it would have been a civil war on Balboa Island. It would have divided the community. It would have put the city in the place of imposing taxes on a community that by a majority didn't want them. And that's not a position I want to be in, or I think that we should be in. And so I think we ought to not vote one way or the other, the city's votes, to put our fingers on the scales of what ought to be, and should be, and in fact is, a neighborhood decision on whether they want to assess themselves for these improvements. That's what the voters are for. That's what the voters do, and we shouldn't do it. Now, we should look at the formula. If our not doing that skews the, the scales one way or the other, we should fix that part, too. But that's where, where I would be. And I frankly don't think the city needs to add more staff, so that we're staffing this and doing this ourselves. This is an Edison improvement. Should be managed by Edison. They have responsibility for it, and we don't need to hire more people to do it.
Councilmember Petros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm right in the process of living that, that civil war. And I want to make it abundantly clear, as we talk about community meetings and continuing them, or facilitating the petition process. First of all, the petition went out with the letter, and the letter explained what the purpose of the petition was. So to just waive that petition is a little disingenuous. There was a lot more to it than that. But it needs to be a constant reminder, this is not, this is not, not a city-driven project. This is instituted, initiated, carried forward by the neighborhoods. We are there to help facilitate that dialogue, and that dialogue could go, yea, we want it, or it could go, no, we don't. But I just want to make it very clear to say, this is not something where there's big government rolling in, telling you, the residents, what to do or how to do it. That's not the point here. There is the notion, though, that there would be city funds spent as a result of an action taken here. And I think that we should be very prudent with the city's fiduciary responsibility, and not lower that, that 60%. All that 60% says is an indicator, a bellwether, of the temperature, given some pretty nebulous information. The final, the final estimates are not provided yet. And therefore, it would be, I think, not prudent on our behalf to lower that, given the fact that the information that's being presented to the residents isn't really fleshed out yet. I do believe that it's good for the community to underground the utilities. I think that it, it has been proven that it enhances property values. But I appreciate the fact that that, the realization of the property value enhancement only comes at the sale of the property. And therefore, for people who have been in their homes for 45 years, and plan on being there another 45 years, that's an unrealized gain, and, and is really a burden. So I don't know that it is in our interest to, to vote our property, because it does set up a situation where the city can unfairly burden a resident with something that, had we not been invited into the fray, would not have occurred. So I don't know if that helps, Mr. Vkojovich, but those are my thoughts on the matter.
Mayor Protim Dixon?
Could you, Mark, could you clarify the pursuit, purchasing other 20A agency credits? That is for the public domain, isn't it? It's not for residential undergrounding. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there'd be no financial benefit to the residential district?
No.
No. I had another question. Is there any way that we can, we don't have a breakdown of the, all the line items on the costs, on the total costs that add up to the per-lot breakdown. How do we really identify the total, the slide's gone here, the Edison or the telecoms cost, and where that variable might be, what the possible potential to reduce that? Is there a percentage that we think we could do it on our own, or through our own subcontracting, we could reduce that cost by X amount?
Good question. So the way the costs begin is through what's called a rough order of magnitude. So we draw up a map, and we sit down with Edison and the telecoms, and they kind of look at it, and they count polls, and look at footage, and they say, rough order of magnitude cost is, is this amount. Maybe it's $300 per, per linear feet of, of cabling. And then we add in all the other things that are necessary. So there's consultant costs to prepare the report, there's financial costs, and then we plug in that number, and then that has an overall number, and then we have an average parse, average price per parcel. And it is conservative, and it's meant to be that way, because, you know, from previous history, you know, reading the information, we don't want to have our costs be, be, be incorrect. And most districts, and so from there, you know, if they, if they approve, then we actually do an actual calculated engineering cost based on their footage, and we have hard bids. Edison has a hard bid in place, and then we can do the assessment. Back to your, your original question, which is, could we do it cheaper? I think we could. Part of the, the difficulty is that the, the costing information we get from the utilities and from Edison is not open book, like we do our public bids. There's no line items, there's a cost, there's general descriptions. And looking at those costs, and we look at, you know, per-footage costs, and, and as Councilmember Pieter stated, you know, there are ways where we think we probably could do it cheaper. But there is the other balancing end of those things, because they, they take management, and that management is a cost. We would certainly, you know, contract out for that, but there's costs associated with that. And that one photo I had up there with an alley construction, if you can imagine, we can get through an alley pretty quickly, but the amount of detail work, not in inspecting the pipe, but in making sure all the residents understand the project, they have an accommodation for their cars and their families, it takes hours and hours and hours of time, and that equates to money.
One other question, it's a follow-up. You mentioned that, two weeks ago, that the above-ground vault mech, or hybrid proposal would save costs considerably. Can you estimate what, how that would affect the total cost, or a per-unit cost? Rough guess. I mean, is it significant material?
Yeah, I think it comes up to about 10% of the total construction cost. So if you have a $20,000 assessment, maybe it could be lowered down to $18,000. It could add up. Yeah, because underground vaults are very expensive.
So by looking at your chart with the estimated cost, could you have another estimate of, if you were to strip out some of these overhead costs, or we do it ourselves, and we do the hybrid setup, what would that cost be, to look at perhaps not such a frightening cost to the individual homeowner? So do, and I think it's good to be conservative, but I'd like to be more realistic as well.
We could do that.
Okay. Councilmember Muldoon, did you want to weigh in on this?
Just to direct staff that I join with councilmembers Curry and Petros, and keeping it as-is, mostly to avoid risk and protect those on fixed income. I think on a, it could be a case-by-case basis, as whether or not the city weighs in with its property, depending on public safety, in the case of like a leaning tower, or a utility tower, but I pretty much believe it's fine as is. Thank you.
Councilmember Duffy, any comments?
None, thanks.
Okay. I, I think, I think one of the biggest problems we have is it takes so long from the petition process to the voting, the voting process, that, that you need, you need the cushion in there, in order, in order to take into account the contingencies of property ownership, changing, cost escalations, things of those nature. And I'd like to find a way to lower the, the petition threshold, but as long as there's such a long time delay, it just doesn't seem prudent to me to, to go in and do any significant lowering of that. As far as the city's participation in these, in these Assessment Districts, on Balboa Island, when the city opted not to, not to vote, Councilman Curry, you're right, we ended up skewing the vote by not, by not doing that, because our property was still in the, in the district. So that's always been a, been a problem for me, because I thought that we made a mistake at that point in time in not voting our property. But maybe the solution is, as Mr. Willis said, if the city's not going to vote its property, it takes its property out of the district for purposes of petitions, for purposes of voting. But at the same time, when the district is formed, we get assessed. Now, is that legally permissible to do that?
We're talking about that here. But does it skew the vote in a different way, that it's automatic vote yes, then, if you take it out? But...
Well, we're, we're, we're just trying, I'm just trying to find a way that we, we can not vote, but because we're taking, we're not voting, that we're skewing the, you know, we're, in Balboa Island, we skewed the, the decision a completely different way.
No, you're right, yeah. Let, let us take a look at that, whether it's legal, because we would, we would be in the eventual, eventually, we'd be in the district and pay the assessment. So can you pull it out for counting purposes? I suppose you could, but...
Yeah, and I know you can't, I'd have to think about, well, this is a star, and I know you can not vote the property, so you're not skewing it by voting one way or the other. But I don't know whether it skews it by just even having it in the district, so that's something we'd have to think about.
Wouldn't that affect the per-unit cost?
You can also just divide your votes and vote half yes, half no.
Let's ask Mark. Oh, sorry.
So there is another program called 20C, and so, and we can look into this, but we could probably do a carve-out for city-owned land, and we just basically underground our own portion, our own frontage, and our own costs, and therefore, it's carved out of the, out of the district completely.
So it'd be basically a separate project, so we would end up paying our share, but just through a different mechanism.
That's correct.
But then it wouldn't be offsetting, or spreading the cost over a larger base? So it'd be disadvantageous to the residents, then, by carving out the city? Because their costs would be higher, per unit?
Well, if we're, if we're in the district, we would be subject to the assessment. So taking us out of it and paying it through 20C, it would just be paying the direct cost of it.
I think it sounds like you need to do a little bit more work. I, I think you understand the concept.
I missed Mr. Pieter's comment. I, we were, did you get your question answered, or?
I was gonna say, a lot of times, the amount of votes that you cast are determined by square footage, because it's commercial property or government property. You can always cast 50% one way and 50% the other way, and you neutralize yourself.
So I guess my final comment would be, we really need to find a way to speed these districts up. The, the time between the petition process and the time you go to a vote, there's too many factors that enter into the process that, that can change people's opinion, whether they're, you know, the property turns over, someone passes away, cost escalations, project scope. I mean, we really need to find a way to shorten that process up.
So let me reiterate what I've heard. I've heard not to change the threshold from 60 to 50, and that's the sentiment petition gathering phase. I've heard that you'd like us to look at possibly a Rule 20C method for city-owned property, to make sure it doesn't penalize or support the district, or the folks gathering the petitions. We will, we didn't hear any comment about continuing to pursue Rule 20A funds. We'll continue to do that, because we can buy those at 55 or 50 cents on the dollar. I just make a note to the doctor that was here, I don't see him anymore. San Joaquin Hills is in the priority list for those 20A funds. I think it's third right now. But those do take a while to, to generate. And we'll, we'll continue to work on ways to speed things up as best we can. I didn't hear any specific direction on us doing more work, but we could certainly, beyond what Mr. Pieter said, but we can certainly... beyond what Mr. Pieter said, but we can certainly look at that with each project as we go in. So if you're comfortable with that, we'll bring that back to you as a council policy with some potential changes there.
Can you clarify that last statement you made?
Oh, sorry. Should the city be doing more work associated with, that Edison today does? I heard Mr. Curry and Mr. Pieter weigh in on that and I may have missed other folks' way in.
I support, if it's a lowered cost, I support.
It's lower cost, okay.
Yeah, no, I would be in support of, if the city can take on the project and we can save a substantial amount of cost, then I would support doing that. I mean, the way I see it, it's no different than a developer doing a new subdivision and putting all the infrastructure in and the utility company pulling their cables. The only difference is the subdivider is dealing with raw land and not having to work in alleys and stuff like that. That complicates it a little bit, but the basic principle's the same. It seems to me there could be substantial cost savings there.
How about Mr. Petros? Because... Well, I would agree if we're talking about the same level of staff. I don't want to necessarily suggest that, well, let's go off and do that if it also means that the long-term costs of the city rise because of increasing staff costs.
Right.
Outside consultants.
Yeah, I respect that position very much. I would be, my public works people would kick me if they wouldn't remind me that even when we do hire consultants, we do, that does take supervision time. So we'll have to take a look at that.
And then Councilmember Pieter mentioned about the financing and a couple of the audience members did as well, to look to alternative methods of financing or private financing.
Yeah, I think Dan M. has certainly a perspective on that. We could come back with some ideas there.
And Mr. Mayor, the other object I heard from everybody, not my proposal, but that the city would be taken out of the pool as far as the petition and the vote.
Yeah, I meant to say that if I did, and that concept of maybe a Rule 20C project. So I was speaking in government these days there and I apologize.
All right. Any other comments from council?
Let me make sure before we leave that. Mark, do you feel like you have direction? Okay, thanks.
Clear as mud, I'm sure. Next is public comments. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay. Any comments on non-agenda or closed-session items?
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher and I'd like to speak about the Woody's Wharf issue, which I see is on the closed-session agenda and is also the genesis of item number nine on the evening agenda, in which you will be considering asking the staff to revise the council appeal policy in the city. I'm a little surprised because I thought the Woody's Wharf matter had been settled. Woody's was granted, for those of you who don't know it, a permit by the Planning Commission back in 2013. A council member then appealed and led the charge to void the Planning Commission decision. Woody's objected to that in court, and although the trial judge denied Woody's any relief, an appeals panel unanimously found that the council appeals process that we currently have in Newport Beach is flawed on numerous levels, voiding the council's decision and leaving the Planning Commission decision intact. The only thing I can imagine you would be talking about in closed session is whether to appeal the appeals court decision to the California Supreme Court. There are at least two deep ironies in this and I would strongly urge you against even considering the thought of appeal. One irony is when the matter was before the Planning Commission, Woody's main argument, which made little sense to me, was that since they had been violating the law, operating without a permit for so long, they'd earned the right to have a permit. That would have been a good basis for an appeal. But the way our appeals worked, our argument to the Supreme Court is going to have to be that we have been handling appeals improperly for so long that it must have become proper. And I don't think that's going to make any more sense to them. A second irony is that you have on the same closed-session agenda, something regarding the Pacific Shores litigation about group homes. Those of you new to the council may not be aware that the city in the past spent, I would guess, something over a quarter of a million dollars pursuing a similarly unlikely to succeed appeal to the United States Supreme Court. What I would like to point out is that when you commit public money on something that has so remote a chance of a useful result, it should not be viewed by you as an investment in the city's future. It's much more like agreeing in all probability to flush the public's money down the drain. I don't think that's a responsible thing to do. And if you do vote on what I assume is the Woody's Wharf appeal issue, I hope we will hear how all of you vote on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Mr. Harp, do we have announcements?
Thank you, Mayor Selich. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss labor negotiations between the city and all represented employees with the city's labor negotiator, Dave Kiff, the city manager, and meet with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, including Pacific Shores, properties Newport Coast Recovery, Woody's Group versus Newport Beach, as well as Newport Beach versus Lido Partners. Thank you.